Good evening. All right, thank you for coming. It is 7:00 PM and I call the March 13th, 2023 Regular School Board Meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Maggie Smith, would you please call the roll?
Barb Wunsch.
Here.
Alan Fox.
Here.
Jennifer Deek.
Here.
Maggie Smith, here. Gary Dunlap.
Here.
Chris Lauer.
Here.
Bridget Todd Robbins.
Here.
All right, with six of the six board members present, I declare a quorum. I note that the agenda has been posted, distributed, and sent to the local media. With this in mind, are there any changes to this agenda? I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published.
So moved.
Chris has moved.
Second.
Was that Bridget? Bridget has second. To approve the agenda as published. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as published, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion to approve the published agenda has passed. And I don't believe we have public participation tonight. Okay?
No.
All right, moving on to reports and discussion. Item 7.1. I invite Holman High School teacher Lynn Wilson and her students to present on Project Bridge. This item is for report only.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Wilson and I am the teacher for Project Bridge, which is an 18 to 21 special ed class that does transition, and we are based out of the Boys and Girls Club. And... Where's my little dealie to go next? Okay, I'll do it this way. No, I'll come right there. So we try and bridge the gap between high school and their adulthood. This is just a few pictures. The one on the far... I don't know, I guess it would be... Your left, I can't tell what you guys are seeing too. The one where we're holding a box and a poster. We try and do a lot of volunteering and community thankfulness. So we made three boxes of cupcakes and brought them to our transportation and maintenance and said, "Thank you. We appreciate what you guys do." And, you know, it's just a little thing that we like to be able to give back, so that's one of the things that we do. We try to do career development. We work on vocational skills and we try and get as many community experiences possible. The picture with Jayden and Ms. Everie is we are... We host a dance every year for special ed students in the surrounding area. We usually invite up to 14 districts to come to it during the school day. So they are making some of the decorations. The middle picture, we give back to the community and we ring bells for Salvation Army at the Festival Foods here in Holman. One of our students is nonverbal and she was a wonderful greeter and wished everybody a Merry Christmas with that big green button on her tray. She would hit that when people would come through and it would wish them Merry Christmas. And then we also participate in Special Festers, which is the Thursday before Oktoberfest. They open the Northside Festgrounds to special ed students and all over the area come for that. And they get to do rides free and then they get to eat carnival food and they get to see all their friends from different schools. So again, like I said, that's our whole group that we did for ringing bells. We have another class called Risk to Resilience, which is one of our At-Risk programs at the Boys and Girls Club. And they joined us for ringing bells. A couple of the girls would play their ukuleles or guitars. And then we would sing Christmas songs and greet everybody as they came through the doors. This year was the first year that we had a tree at Rotary Lights, which means we had to do our volunteering beforehand. We picked, actually, we didn't pick. We got given the coldest Friday before Christmas and we worked from 9:00 to 2:00 outside. We dug post holes, we set up trees, they did lights, they did raking, and our students were amazing. They were out there all day, didn't complain, and we got so much work done for them. It was great. And then we took all three of the classes from our building and we got to decorate our tree. And then we had our sign for Ace Academy. So that was pretty cool to see this year. We do a lot of in-house jobs along with getting them out in the community. So we clean tables at the Holman Area Community Center after their senior nutrition lunches every day. And the students get to interact with the seniors that are out there. We also go and pick up the lunches for our whole building up at the high school, so they have to do the carts and they run... Help run the lift on the van. We shred papers and then we also clean the tables at the high school and middle school in between the breakfast break and their lunches, which helps out the custodial staff a lot. They really appreciate that. We try and do some peer mentoring with a couple of different classes. So we've gone bowling, baking. We bake every Friday, cook or bake every Friday. And then we went out to Ferguson, so we have some students paired up with some of ours just to help do some peer mentoring. So PE, we have access to the two large gyms at the Boys and Girls Club, which is wonderful. We also get to use the outside playground area and we did like yard Yahtzee in that bottom picture when it was nice out. We also get to practice just rec leisure things, darts, foosball. They have pool, we have ping pong, and then like again, we went bowling with one of the other classes. Rec leisure, again, we work on things that they can do all through adulthood, going to a park. The All Abilities Park down in La Crosse is wonderful. As you can see, we actually have one of the girls that's in a wheelchair on one of the... I don't even know what they call it. It kind of just rocks back and forth, which she thought it was like the best ride ever, squealing and raising her hands, thinking it was great. Just to be able to get them out, we went with a couple of different classes. We also went to Ferguson's Apple Orchard and they did... The picture in the middle is their huge sensory corn bin where you can just sit and... They would sit in it all day if they could. They loved just doing the corn bin.
And there was corn for weeks, let me tell you.
Yes, we found corn for quite a while in our classroom. We work a lot on community and safety words. We do current event readings and then we pair it with things that we can do out in the community. So that's just kind of some of the classroom things that we do. We have a full functional teaching apartment, so we have a bathroom with a wheelchair accessible shower, a changing table if we need it. We do cooking and baking every Friday, sometimes more often, and then laundry, so they learn how to sort and wash and fold and all that good stuff that they need to do at home. Right, boys? We also have a card company, which is... We have an online presence and then we are in the different schools. So the middle is a card rack, so we make greeting cards, sell them for a dollar a piece. We have them in all of our schools at Transportation and here in District Office. And then when COVID hit, we couldn't go into the schools to restock and things like that, so we had to come up with an idea of how to use the internet more, so we have an online website that you can order products. And then we deliver them to the different schools. We also have the paracord bracelets and some of the necklaces at both features here in Holman and the features in West Salem. And then CISA 4, where we do a lot of teacher trainings, has... They've taken all of our products and have them on display. So that's grown. So the students learn supply and demand. They go and they have to do restock and then they count the money and then we put the money back into supplies. So it's a whole full circle of how to run a business. Again, we try and do a lot of things out in the community center, so we have a lot of intergenerational things happening with the seniors. We've joined them in Bingo this year, so that's been fun. Sometimes we've won, sometimes we haven't. Sometimes we've even called Bingo. And then before Christmas, the bottom big picture, we actually took our supplies out there and we had some Christmas card samples and then we let them make Christmas cards and then they could take them home. As I mentioned, we have a Spring Fling Dance, which is a huge dance that we organize. And this year it's Friday, April 14th, and we have it during the school day, so all of our students can participate. We have students from other districts in our program, so it's harder for them to come back once they leave during the school day. So the boys are going to hand out an invite and a water bottle to our dance, because you are all invited. If you can make it, it is from 9:30 to 11:30 and it's at the high school in the main gyms. And then I think that's it. So that's just some of the dance things that we do. We try and come up with something different every year.
Thank you, Noah.
For the students to do at the dance. Last year we added face painting, which was a big success. We also have a photo booth. This year we're adding a Plinko game, so we're having one of the tech ed classes fill us a Plinko board. And then we're getting prizes so that they can do Plinko and the face painting. We have snacks that they have to make. So we've kind of grown it a little bit more every year. And then that's our whole group. So we have seven students in our program this year. So... Do you have any questions for me about Project Bridge?
Any questions?
Anybody.
I don't think I have any. Nope.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next we're moving on to item 7.2. Summer School Administrator Sue Eitlin, Ben Taschner, and Nick Baki will now present information on plans for 2023 summer school sessions. This item is for report only.
Hello, everyone. I just want to commend all the students. We thank you very much for the invitation to the Spring Fling and for all that you do out in the community and for everyone here. So thank you very much. So for summer school this year, at the elementary level, we will have the same classes as we did... As we have had for quite a while. For the Ready, Set, Learn in the middle there, that is a prep for incoming kindergarten students. So anyone in 4K or others that are entering kindergarten for the first time will have Ready, Set, Let's Learn. They stay with their teacher for the entire morning and there's an education assistant as well. We will have about 20 students in each class and we do try to have the students that are going to the same elementary school in the same class, so they can start forming friendships. We're also doing closing the gap, so for kindergarten through 4th grade, the current students, we will have reading and math. And those skills are what they're currently learning this year, so it's a review of the current school year's skills that they've been working on. And then we'll have one enrichment class for each grade level. And so everybody will take all of those classes. The program changes since last summer. We do try to rotate the locations so that students are able to attend in their own school for at least one time during their elementary career. So this year it is at Viking Elementary. Ready, Set, Learn has a number of students that want to get into the class. And in the past, we've had to say, "Sorry, we're full," so we're hoping to add a couple of sections. Those classes may or may not be the same... Kids from the same school. It might be a combination just because of the different kids that enroll. So again, all of our classes are contingent upon staff and spacing availability. So if we don't have enough teachers, we won't be able to do that. We also decided to change the class sizes for kindergarten through 4th grade this year. We are going to cap it at 15 students. And last year we had had an interventionist kind of team teaching with the classroom teacher. And then after the main lesson was taught, they would take a group of students and work with those children. We decided just to have each teacher take 15 students this year. So the last thing that's a change for this year is we're kind of redoing our process just a little bit. We are hiring those teachers first so that we make sure we have enough staff for the kids. And then once the classes are filled up, we will put students on a waiting list. So if anyone says, "Oh, I'm sorry, I can't come anymore," then we can go to that next... To the first student on the waiting list in that grade level and check with them to see if they want to still attend summer school. So those are the changes for elementary.
All right, so at the middle school, we are looking to kind of revamp our whole idea a little bit of summer school. So before, we've had kind of a remedial where it's really kind of focused on those academic skills and then some enrichment. And then kind of having a talented and gifted tag course as well. Where we're really trying to look at all of the classes being somewhat of an enrichment. So if it's academic, kind of taking that, the academic skills that they need, whether it be math, but applying it and maybe focusing on some math board games or math breakout boxes or just different areas to kind of get students more engaged in that summer school. So some changes, that would be a big change to what we have this year. Also looking to add a snack and breakfast time right away in the morning, just to kind of energize the students as they come in for the summer. So as you look at those focus areas, really trying to have an ELA in math. And then here are some just other ideas that we've had in the past for enrichment. Kind of put a plug out there that we are still looking for some course proposals and some teachers. So know anybody, they can reach out to me and I can help them fill out that information. But it is definitely trying to take that approach of kids that are maybe struggle during the school year with different academic skills. Let's practice those skills, but in a different way, so that they have that positive connection with school during summer in hopes that it can kind of enhance it throughout the school year then too. So that's kind of that academic and enrichment piece. And then kind of looking at our mandatory grade level for students that maybe fail classes in 8th grade. Still having that as a requirement, that students that fail would be required to attend summer school. But making that shift from spending time doing the coursework, but maybe looking at skill development. Some community service opportunities for those students and then furthering like their career exploration. So we do a lot of career exploration in 8th grade. And we even have that Career Day that's at TC, but even trying to set up some college visits during the summer, trying to connect with somebody from TC on like, "Hey, this is something you're interested in. Well, these are all the skills that we need to do in class right now in your life to be able to get here." And so really making that mandatory, but kind of changing the approach to that, focusing on those skill developments in different areas. So that again is kind of a recap of summer school at the middle school. Making some shifts, but really also trying to reach out and get more teachers involved and seeing how we can make those shifts.
At the high school, I would say this is probably pretty standard compared to what we've been in the past. Just a couple of quick updates. We typically have offered a freshman-level computer science class or computer apps class that many of you maybe are familiar of, depending on what students you have had gone through the school. We've removed that as a requirement for students to take for graduation. So then as a result, we kind of rebalanced that FTE and added an economics section, which has really been great because then now this really balances the offerings for students from 9th through 11th grade, incoming 9th graders through 11th graders, which I really like. So ultimately, at this point right now, we are already solid and scheduled to complete all of the Session 1 courses. Students have already been enrolled. Sections of typically 30, unless you see two sections. And we typically will have 60, roughly 60 students taking advantage of those opportunities. And some people always ask, "What type of format do they run at the high school?" I really try to give the autonomy back to the teachers to be able to dictate what they feel that they need to do to be able to have students demonstrate that learning. So for example, students that would be taking Totally Fit Wellness are still expected to come in and complete some of those workouts. Whereas something like our US 3 course, which is a freshman-level social studies course, most of that is asynchronous online, do it at your own pace, which offers more flexibility with families, which is something we learned through COVID and obviously for our staff and students. So that's kind of Session 1. That's pretty much wrapped up, ready to rock and roll. Session 2 is still yet to be determined. That typically is done more in May, when more grades are finalized and we kind of really understand where our student's going to fall by the end of the school year. Our Session 2 is a recovery section. So what this is, is really try to catch kind of those middle ground gaps for students that maybe didn't demonstrate everything they needed to to be able to pass that class. But they knew the majority of what was necessary for the class, but they maybe missed a project or missed an assessment or didn't do well on one or two maybe things. So we set a kind of a threshold in there and then students are able to then recover credits through the Social Studies, ELA, Math, Science course. And those are taught by teachers and they really meet the students where they are in terms of their courses. So for example, if somebody would reach or earn a 50% in government, our government educator would actually work with that student and have them only work on that concept that they did not meet for passing. They wouldn't take the whole class over. They'd only focus in on what they need to do to be able to earn that credit. And then in addition to that, any student who's enrolled in band, choir, or orchestra also come in and start getting ready for the amazing season that they have in the fall from marching band and all their performances and those types of things in addition. So that's what I have for the high school. Thanks for supporting summer school. This is a great opportunity for our students. So also, I can't give enough shout out, as you can hear from my colleagues next to me. The dedication that teachers do to commit time to this is very much appreciated, otherwise we wouldn't be able to offer these opportunities, so.
Any questions for the team?
Any questions?
What's enrollment looking like for both middle school and high school? Is there tons of interest?
Yeah, thanks for... I actually should have commented on that. This summer for Session 1, that's all optional, so students are not required to take it. This is the highest number, record numbers of students actually seeking out summer school opportunities. We... This year is the first year since I have been doing this that we have not had to have had students duplicate enrollments in order to make sections full. So every student that's enrolled only was in one course, which is a positive thing because we found historically when students were trying to take two courses, it was just too much and it was really unbalanced. So yeah, this was by far the best recommended request that we've had all year, since I've been here.
And I would say at the middle school, like I said, we're trying to create some new courses and change that format. So really trying to wrap up by the end of this month on which teachers I have to then kind of reach out to families and whether we recommend like, "Hey, these would be some good classes for kids to sign up," or that mandatory piece of it. Kind of got to wait on the front end to get some... Get our teachers to also want to be a part of the summer school and create those opportunities and then kind of see what enrollment will be.
So is the middle school and high school also doing the same thing as elementary, where you're finding the teachers first and then you're filling the classes?
I would say that I'm trying to find the teachers that teach different courses, yes, and then seeing what courses they are to then have students enroll.
And I would say I'm opposite of that, because I need to see the requests in order to determine what FTE that I would need for staffing. So from Session 1, I actually do the requests by students. Based upon those requests, then I feel, okay, I can run two sections of oral communications. Then I reach out to the staff and say, "Okay, who would be interested?" And then I really try to work with staff too. So for example, I had two teachers interested in oral comms, so then I kind of work with them and say, "Okay, would each of you want to take a section, work together collaboratively to run the course?" So I kind of do it the opposite way.
Okay, so you don't have a waiting list for Session 1? You just figure out how many sessions you're going to offer based on the number of folks interested?
Yes, yes. However, I do actually currently still have some students on a waiting list for our economics, but not enough students to justify another section. So right, there's kind of a fiscal component to this and I think we have to be mindful of that. So for example, I think I maybe have maybe four to five individuals that wanted to request economics that didn't get it. But what I will tell you is that I work extremely hard on making sure if a student puts in more than one request, that they get all requests. So any student that submitted more than one, I guarantee, I got them a course. But if students came in and said, "I only want economics," well, if I have 45 kids that want just economics, I got 30 seats. And then by then, we kind of have to go through there, so.
Makes sense. Sue, in the elementary schools with the waiting lists and waiting to, you know, figure out who the teachers are, is that including also the kids that are recommended for summer school? Or is that just for the kids that... The other kids that weren't recommended?
Yeah, we actually have enrollment in three parts. So we're first doing the Ready, Set, Learn kiddos. And then the next part is any child who was recommended by their teacher gets to enroll first. And then if there are spaces left, then we open it up to all students following that.
All right, any other questions? Okay, that's all we got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item 7.3. Network Administrator Keith Johnson will present information on bids for network switches, related hardware, and configuration services. This item will appear on the March 27th consent agenda.
As mentioned, my name is Keith Johnson with the IT department. So this past January, we went to bid for a new network solution, a network switch solution within the district, which is how the internet's provided to everyone, how the wireless is able to work and how like all the cameras and everyone's file servers are able to run. Part of the reason we did this is because our current system is, if it hasn't already, it's starting to hit its end of life, meaning there's no more updates, no more security updates, and there's even been some that have started to fail. So in this proposal, or sorry, not this proposal, but in this request, we received a total of five or six bids from five different vendors. What I'm proposing for the board is if we could go with bidder one or camera corner connecting point, which bid Aruba HPE for a total of $302,000. They are not the lowest bid, but we decided to go with them due to our familiarity with the vendor as well as the familiarity with Aruba as a manufacturer. So part of this too, with the $302,000, is we would also leverage federal E-rate funding, which would hopefully cover about 50% of the cost. And did anyone have any questions?
Could you make that a tiny bit bigger? Is that possible?
So where's the other 50% of the cost coming from then?
It would come from the IT budget.
Okay.
From next fiscal year.
So I know maybe this is... I know this is more about the hardware and the switches. I guess just... I was thinking about when the internet has gone out here in the past, like the disruption that has made and then there was discussion at one point about getting like a backup system. Is that a part of this at all or is that completely separate?
That is not. And that was actually, we had a second line implemented, was it about eight, nine months ago, to help with those. And since then, I've actually noticed a couple of times where one would go down, but no one would notice because of that.
And then it switches over. Awesome, so we have that in place.
Yep.
Excellent, okay. Any other questions? No other questions, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to the consent agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background materials on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided. I will do a motion by Barb and second by Gary. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion passes.
I just have a quick announcement this evening. I just would like to share that we did have retirement of our principal at Viking Elementary, Ms. Striegel. And that she actually started in the school district of Holman in 2004 and she was a middle school teacher. And then she's been principal at Viking since 2010. And that, just want to thank her for all her many years of service and how she's really had a great impact on so many of our staff and students and our families and that. And she will be greatly missed, so if you see her, wish her a great retirement. I know my guess is we might see her around here and there, because she has such a passion for those kids, but anyways, we wish her well.
Okay, moving on to Board Debrief. I will call upon board members and ask you to present any comments or committee reports you have. And tonight, we'll start with Barb.
Well, thank you to Project Bridge for presenting tonight. I would like to say also congratulations to Mrs. Striegel. Thank you to your dedication to the district and specifically to Viking Elementary. She was very passionate about getting... She was very passionate about getting, making sure that the, what am I trying to say? Making sure that the updates are going to be done at Viking in the coming years. I'd also like to state that the High School Theater Department will be presenting Back to the Eighties Friday and Saturday night, as well as a matinee on Sunday. So if you get a chance, I think that's going to be a very fun presentation. And also wanted to say congratulations to the seven high school students that are moving on to the state runs it competition in April.
Okay, thanks Barb. Alan?
So this previous Tuesday, we had our juniors taking the ACT test. And from what I've heard, I've heard a lot more positive results this year than I've heard in years previous, which is always a good sign. A lot of people feeling pretty confident about it, actually. Besides that, this weekend Show Choir held a competition here at Holman, was from what I heard very well, good, wasn't able to make it sadly, were conflicts, but from what I saw, a very good performance. Besides that, we've got some spring sports starting up with boys tennis and then baseball and softball will be starting pretty soon. So we've got to keep an eye out for that. Today we had Tony Evers, the Governor of Wisconsin, visit our high school, tour our, one of our art, technology classes, one of our tech ed classes and special ed classes, which I'm sure was a pleasure for all the students in those classes to be able to see the governor. Besides that, upcoming, we've got that performance this weekend from the theater department of Back to the Eighties. From what I hear from some of my friends in theater and in band, it's going to be a real blast. So make sure you come and see that. And besides that, we've got a blood drive coming up on the 8th. Sorry, that is my musical date. We've got a blood drive coming up. We've had a lot of success with that previously, so just if you can, make sure you get in for that. And then last but not least, Orchestra, the 26th of May, this March, is having a concert with all of its classes from six to senior year, but that is all.
Okay, thanks Alan. Maggie?
I will echo the gratitude to Mrs. Striegel and to Project Bridge for presenting tonight. And then also wanted to give a brief kudos for, I don't think Travis is here, for the kids' talk videos, because they are the highlight of the Internet, in my opinion. That's all from me.
Okay, Gary?
I'd like to thank that the the Bridge, the Bridge outfit and the Bridge class, I think it's real admirable that the school district does, has programs like that and they take care of our own. And I see them around town and I see them on the, when they're doing the job shadowing at jobs. It's such, it should make me very proud. Another thing I had, it just seems like this week, there's been a lot of nonsense with with politics going on and so on and so forth. I want to thank everybody and all the teachers and everybody involved in the school district for for exposing our kids' knowledge and the truth. You know how I feel about the truth, because that will always, that'll always beat ignorance and deception every day, I hope. We can keep going down that path and get back on track. That's all I got.
All right, Chris?
I just want to say thank you and congratulations to Ms. Striegel. She's been my kid's principal for, since my kids were in school. So I have nothing but admiration for her and just again, congratulations and thank you.
Bridget?
I won't repeat what others have said. I'll just say, you know, thank you for those of you working on all of this summer school. I just think that that just is such a wonderful part of our success of our students. And I know it takes a lot of work and dedication and I just have a lot of appreciation for that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I just wanted to highlight that I had the opportunity to meet with Governor Evers today and walk around the high school with him. He got to see different classrooms. He got to hear our nutrition program. I think he spoke about nutrition or meals for all, something that's in his proposal. So you'll see that in the media today and it was, it was just good to be here and be able to witness and see that all happen today. So that's all I have. Moving on to our upcoming board meeting schedule. We have a Personnel and Governance meeting at 5:00 PM this Wednesday. Then on March 20th, we have the Student Achievement and Learning Committee at 4:30, followed by the Candidate Forum at 7:00, which again will take place here in the boardroom. On March 27th, we have a Facilities Committee meeting at 5:00, followed by a board meeting at 7:00. Spring election occurs on April 4th, so I encourage everybody to get out and vote. April 11th, we have a Finance Committee meeting at 5:00 and it is a Tuesday and we're having a board meeting at 7:00. And then lastly, we have our Board Organizational meeting with the new board here on April 24th. So we are having again another closed session tonight. So I now ask Board Clerk Maggie Smith to read the motion to move to closed session.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby moves to adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c) considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. In this case, analysis of compensation for district positions, including individual educators and administrators.
Okay, Maggie has made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, Chris has seconded. Any discussion? All right, Maggie, please proceed with the roll call vote.
Barb Wunsch?
Yes.
Jennifer Deek?
Yes.
Maggie Smith, yes. Gary Dunlap?
Yes.
Chris Lau?
Yes.
Bridget Todd Robbins?
Yes.
All right, motion carried.